County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30 as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for live streaming and review at jacksoncountyor.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board and released on the county website and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administration Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings or watch online at jacksoncountyor.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Dave Dodderer, Colleen Roberts, and Rick Dyer, working for you.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming today, and it is 9:30, so we'll call the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of February 28, 2024 to order. We're live here in the courthouse auditorium and via audio video conference on Zoom. Start today with the Pledge of Allegiance. Hope you please rise. Peter.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation that we look forward to every year, and that's our annual financial statement audit, and we have with us Amanda McClery-Moore and Leslie Daggett from Moss Adams LLP. Come on up and... Good morning.
Morning. Thanks for having us here today. I'm Amanda McClery-Moore, I'm a partner with Moss Adams. I spend nearly all of my time auditing government such as the county. I specialize in cities and counties, but I have a number of other special districts as well, and we're here today to present the June 30, 2023 audit results.
All right, yeah, and I'm Leslie Daggett. Okay, so...
Maybe I point this?
Maybe. I don't know. Oh. Oh, here we go.
Do we need to point it anywhere?
Oh, too many clicks.
There we go.
Okay. So here's our agenda today. I'm going to cover the first two items, which is the nature of services provided and the significant audit areas, and then Amanda's going to cover our audit opinions, reports, communication to those charged with governance, county statistics, and new standards. Okay, so the first one. So we audit the county. We audit for each the White City Enhanced Law Enforcement and then both pension plans under generally accepted auditing standards and then the generally accepted governmental auditing standards. We perform a review over the White City Lighting District, which is less in scope than an audit because the district expenses less than $500,000 during the year. So number two, we assist with and perform a technical review of the financial statements to ensure they're in compliance with both the generally accepted accounting principles as well as the Government Finance Officers Association or the GFOA. And then you guys have an ACFER, which you obviously know, which means your financial statements include an additional statistical section and an introductory section. And then again, you guys receive the GFOA Certificate of Excellence, which you've done for several years, which is awesome. Then number three, since the county is an Oregon municipality, you are subject to the Oregon Minimum Standards. We test compliance with the provision of the Oregon Revised Statutes, which includes such items as review of our budgetary law and the procurement policies. So number four, since the county does expend over $750,000 in federal awards, we perform a single audit under the Uniform Guidance. And number five, since the county has an airport, we issue a report over the compliance requirements related to passenger facility charges. Our testing is done in compliance with the requirements prescribed in the Passenger Facility Charge Audit Guide for public agencies issued by the Federal Aviation Administration. And then the last one, reporting. We report on the overall audit plan at the beginning of the audit, and then at the end we report on the audit results, including communicating any internal control findings or issues of noncompliance, which is what we're doing today. Okay, so critical audit areas. This list is not a list of everything we audit, but these are the areas that we spend the most time on. So cash and investments, they are a significant balance on your financial statements. There's extensive disclosures. We test this area through confirmations, ensuring the banks used by the county are qualified depositories, and then we review the financial statement disclosures to ensure that they are complete and accurate. And then revenue and receivables. This is a complex area. There's three different bases of accounting, the budgetary basis, the full accrual, and then the modified accrual. We test through confirmations, analytical procedures, and through test of details. We also test revenue cutoff through our receivables procedures to make sure that the revenue is recorded in the proper year. So capital assets, it is a significant balance in the full accrual statements and the proprietary funds. We test additions and disposals and look at depreciation for reasonableness. It is a challenging area because all the departments do have to work together to make sure that all the assets are captured and properly recorded and then also removed. Leases, this was new, last year was a new standard, GASB 87, so related to leases, which required the county to add a few more lines on your balance sheet to record the lease asset and also the liability. In the current year, we tested any new leases to make sure that they were properly recorded. Long-term debt, it's not a significantly complex area, however, it is an area with lots of financial statement disclosures. We send confirmations, we test payments and proceeds, and then we test compliance with any debt covenants. accrued liabilities, PERS and OPEB. We get the information from the state for both PERS and OPEB, and you also have your own OPEB plan, but since actuaries are used in these areas, we test inputs for reasonableness and review the assumptions. And then the last three areas on here, we leverage our testing with the work performed by internal audit. So grants, like I mentioned before, since the county had over $750,000 in federal expenditures, we did prepare a single audit. We reviewed the compliance supplement to determine the areas to focus our testing on for each major program. This year, you guys had three major programs. And then for Oregon Minimum Standards, since the county is an Oregon municipality, we are required to perform tests of the county's compliance with provisions of the Oregon Revised Statutes. Some of the areas we test for noncompliance are use of approved banks, debt, insurance, and fidelity bond coverage, use of revenue from taxes on motor vehicle use fuel funds, investment of public funds, awarding of public contracts, and then preparation, adoption, and execution of the annual budget. And then the last area, internal controls and the IT environment evaluation. This is part of our planning procedures to help us assess risks and develop our audit plan. We obtain an understanding of the controls, perform walkthroughs for the entire transaction, and then also test controls. This year, we tested controls specifically to charges for services and intergovernmental revenue in addition to our walkthroughs. And then Amanda is going to go over the results of the audit.
Yep. Are you saying I'm not as tall as she is? Okay, after all of that work that Leslie walked us through that we perform, and like we said, that's by no means everything that we do in order to get our comfort over issuing our reports. That is how we come to our findings. So I have listed up here five audit reports. So based on all of that work, we issue five audit reports as part of our audit. The first one is over your financial statements or ACFER, and we issued a clean or unmodified opinion over the financial statements. That means we were able to get comfortable, that the financial statements were materially correct in accordance with the GASB principles that you follow for accounting principles. The next two reports I'm going to tackle together, so the Oregon Minimum Standards Audit Report as well as the Governmental Auditing Standards Report. Both of these reports report on internal controls as well as potential noncompliance. If we identified any sort of significant deficiency or material weakness in internal controls, it would be included in both of these reports, as well as any noncompliance or material noncompliance with the laws and regulations you have to follow. And as you can see on the screen, we're happy to report in both of those reports, we had no reportable findings, we did not identify any control deficiencies that rose to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness over financial reporting. And then under the Oregon Minimum Standards, obviously Leslie walked through some of those requirements that we have to test, some of those standards that you have to follow under the Oregon Revised Statutes and Oregon Administrative Rules, and then any other areas of compliance, we did not identify any reportable findings. In your Uniform Guidance Report, so this is your federal awards audit, we audited three programs this year. We audited WIC, we audited the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund as well as the Coronavirus State and Local Recovery Funds. So those last two programs both come out of the ARPA funds under the pandemic or COVID-19 funding, and we issued clean or unmodified opinions over each one of those programs. We did have one reportable finding related to WIC. In the current year, there was one procurement that did not follow Uniform Guidance. So you have to follow a lot of, lot of different rules, especially over procurement. So Oregon has their own set of rules that you have to follow in order to comply with procurement, and then anything that has those federal awards, you also have to follow the Uniform Guidance standards. And so there was one, there was actually only one procurement, so we tested that one, and while it followed the Oregon standards, it didn't meet those additional requirements under the Uniform Guidance. So we reported, we reported as a significant deficiency in internal controls over compliance different than financial reporting, and because it was the only, there was only one contract, and it wasn't a significant, it was, it was considered to be material but not considered to be a significant part of the program, we did not raise that to material weakness, so it is a significant deficiency, but you had that, that one, one finding this year. And then your last report is over your Passenger Facility Charge Audit, and we found that the county wasn't compliant, it did not have any reportable findings with respect to your, your Passenger Facility Charges. So overall, still very good results. You have the, the one finding. It's, it's relatively common when you have state and federal awards to make sure that you're following those, those right laws and regulations related to procurement, so it can be quite common, and, and I know that that department was in a rush to find someone to fulfill a position that, that the county needed in order to continue to provide service. But just a note for the, the future to make sure that, that all program directors are aware of those additional requirements for the, for the federal awards.
Do you plan on going over that in more detail with the board, or are you going to leave it at that?
That's, that's, that's all I plan to discuss. I can field any questions.
Well, it's important for the board to know. I've discussed it with them, but it's important for the public to know essentially that we, you know, what we have to do with regard to that finding and that we've taken action to correct that as well. So I think if you...
Yeah, I can touch on that.
I'd appreciate it.
So as part of, and this is all included within, within your financial statement packet, so anybody can go out there and read how, how the finding is written. The very first step is for management to respond to that finding, so there's a section within the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs where management responds to the finding. Then they also have to put together a corrective action plan, and it's very specific. You have to, which is, which seems somewhat odd because it seems like personal information, but you have to include who's responsible and when this will be corrected by and what the plan is in order to correct that finding. So as soon as it was identified, management already put a, a plan of action in, in order to make sure that program directors are aware of when they are using federal awards, that any procurements need to continue or to use the, the Uniform Guidance. We haven't, we don't test that yet. We will test it in the next year to make sure that it was implemented, but that plan, and I believe it was to be implemented no later than January 31st, if I remember correctly. So that should, should be corrected as of right now, but we won't be able to test that it was corrected until, till the next audit.
Yeah, let me just add, essentially, we're required to verify that a contractor's able, permitted to receive federal funds, and there's several ways you can do that, but we made it part of our contract template where they have to provide verification that they are qualified. That's as simple as what essentially the, the fix was and what the...
Yeah, it's, it's a common item that's missed. What Danny's talking about is looking on whether a vendor is suspended or debarred. Now, there is Oregon requirements to look for that as well, but just within Oregon. The federal requirements require that you look to SAM.gov and that the, the vendor's registered on there and that they're not suspended or debarred. Your vendor that you're utilizing was not suspended or debarred, but that is something that has to be completed before you enter into the contract. It was tested after the fact to make sure that, that, that they were not, but it does have to be done in that planning phase before the contract is signed, and it, and it is good to be part of the, the contract because that is another way to alleviate that, is to have it be part of the contract that they're asserting to not being suspended or debarred. Yeah.
So what you're saying is as a result of this issue, that you, you found no issue behind it that you were concerned about?
Right, so, so when we're looking at the finding, that it actually, the, there is a noncompliance piece about not, not looking for it being suspended or debarred. However, they were allowable costs, so this wasn't that you misappropriated what you spent, it wasn't allowable cost. You are allowed to get procurements. It is literally following the guidelines for procuring a vendor that, that was missed, but they were still allowable costs. It's not a questioned cost or anything like that. It's really the controls over procurement.
And, and just to reiterate, it, it doesn't have any relation to our financial statements also?
Yeah, you have to have a lot of controls in place. You have to have controls over financial reporting, you have to have controls over compliance with all of the Oregon statutes that you follow, and then you need to have controls over compliance with Uniform Guidance. It's, it's, it's a lot to, it's a lot to handle for sure. All right, with that, so those are our audit reports that are all included within your financial statements. Under the auditing standards that we follow, there are some additional required communications that the audit standards say that are important to communicate even though they're not otherwise documented within the audit reports. So we're going to go through those additional items here. One of them is related to plan, scope, and timing. If we had a scope change or if we needed to make changes to timing that was going to result in you not being able to file your financial statements on time, that would be something that we would communicate to you. So we were able to complete the audit within the same scope that we had planned on and within the, the timeframe in order to submit your financial statements to the state by that December 31st deadline, so no changes there. Significant accounting policies, this is just to highlight that the county has a number of significant accounting policies. Those are included within Note 1. They're worth a read to know what management has selected as your accounting policies and how you account for certain items within the financial statements. One item to highlight there is you do have one new accounting policy this year related to subscription-based IT arrangements. So you did have to implement a new accounting standard this year, GASB 96, which is essentially leases for IT arrangements or subscriptions. And so it very closely follows the, the same guidance that you utilized in the prior year to implement leases, but this is another step in looking at subscriptions or IT-based arrangements and including those on your financial statements. So the, the county did have to, to report some of those, what we call SPITAs, in your financial statements this year. It gets included within your capital asset section, and then there's a subscription liability recorded as well related to those. So that's the only new accounting policy, although it very closely follows your lease accounting policy that was implemented in the prior year. The financial statements, this is to highlight that the financial statements are based on management judgments and significant estimates. So there are a number of estimates included within your financial statements, and so this is to highlight the areas that, that include those significant estimates for the county. You're looking at your claims liability or your PERS or pension liabilities, those other post-employment benefit liabilities, as well as your lives over your, your capital assets and how those get depreciated. All of that is disclosed in that Note 1, Significant Accounting Policy, so just to highlight that. Audit adjustments or past adjustments, these are essentially if we identified errors within the financial statements, we have the requirement to communicate those to you. If we identify in a material error that management needs to correct in order for you to obtain that clean or unmodified opinion, we would highlight that for you as part of our audit process, and we did not have any material adjustments provided to management in order to, to get a clean opinion over the financial statements. There is this other type of potential error, which is called uncorrected or past adjustment. So these are items that we would consider to be immaterial, but, and you were able to not record them if identified and still obtain your clean opinion because they're not considered material, we would communicate those to you as well, and we didn't have any past adjustments in the current year either. So no material adjustments proposed from management, and then no uncorrected misstatements that we identified and management passed on. The next one is if management consulted with other accountants based on, for either accounting policies or audit questions, and the, the requirement there is for us to be involved in that process to make sure that everybody has the same facts and circumstances, especially if you're coming to different conclusions, but we're not aware of management consulting any other accountants as part of our audit process. We didn't have any disagreements or difficulties in performing the audit. Your teams are always great at getting us the information that we need. We work heavily with your internal audit department and your finance department, and they're always great at getting us the information that we need in order to, to get the audit done on time. And the last one is if we had any best practices to, to communicate in writing, we would, we would go over those with you, and we did not issue a best practices letter over this last fiscal year. We just have the one item related to the procurement policy under Uniform Guidance, but that's, that's already a written document, so we don't have, we didn't have anything additional to communicate there. This is to highlight that in addition to management putting together what is a 200-plus-page document, which is your, your ACFER or your financial statements, management also puts together this popular annual financial report, and it's posted on Jackson County's website. If there are citizens that don't want to read the 200-plus-page document, this is information that has been summarized by management in a much easier to read format. Another thing that I want to highlight here is that Jackson County receives what is called the Triple Crown Award for obtaining the GFOA certificate over your financial statements, this PAFR, as well as your budget document. So there are only eight governments in Oregon that have received that award, so just overall, congratulations on putting together just very well put together documents that are, that are easy to read and, and follow. So we talked about how the audit went, our audit results. Now we're going to talk a little bit about what's in the numbers of the financial statements. So we have some slides here that we put together. This is, all comes out of your, your ACFER. You, because you do get the GFOA award, you do put together that statistical information at the back of the ACFER. It presents about 10 years' worth of data. We're just going to look about, at about four or five years' worth of data here and just kind of look at, you know, what, what has been trending in the county over the past few years, and that is kind of small, so I'm going to make sure I can see this. So this first one is on countywide revenues. So Leslie had mentioned earlier back that you have multiple bases of accounting for revenue. You have your budgetary basis, modified accrual, or full accrual. This slide is presented on your full accrual revenues. So this is based on your statement of activities within the financial statements. So when you're looking at your revenue, you can see that last column there is your total revenue, and you can see that it has trended upward over the last four years. However, when looking at where those numbers come from, you can see that it's mostly driven by your grants and contracts numbers. Your charges for services as well as your property tax numbers have just incremental increases year over year, and the majority of those grants and contracts in that increase is really related to funding that has come out of the pandemic. So you've had the coronavirus relief funds, the ARPA funds, and so that has contributed to that growth in your grants and contributions. And it's probably something to highlight here is your grants and contributions are really restricted resources. When you receive those funds, they have to be used for a very specific purpose. Okay, so this is the, the expenses. So these again are the full accrual expenses. Looking at these on a year-over-year basis, sometimes because of the significant changes in your PERS liability year over year that then flow through your expenses, they're not quite as comparative as I would love them to be. I think the goal of implementing those, the GASB 68, GASB 75, of putting the pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities on your financial statements was meant to have somewhat of a smooth trend over your expenses and how the accounting link was set up for that. It didn't really translate fully into that, so some, so some of the analytical type changes you note here really do relate somewhat to your change in, in PERS and pension liabilities year over year. But as you can see, this is how over the past four years, your expenditures have fit into the different buckets of the, of the functions of the county and those trends over the, the last four years. And you can see in that total column that really expenses have remained relatively consistent for the county. So this is net position. This is the last slide on those full accrual statements. So this is if you took all of your assets and got rid of all of your liabilities, what is left at the end of the day? That first darker line there is your, your total net position, and so then what makes up that net position are the next three bars. You can see that over the past five years, your net position has trended up a little bit, and then we'll talk about the details of how, of how you got there. That first green bar there after the total column is your net investment in capital assets. So this is all of your capital assets less any of your debt related to those assets unless your accumulated depreciation. Assuming you weren't continuing to invest in the county, you would see that really trend line go down because your accumulated depreciation and depreciation expense annually is quite significant, so you would see that bar trend down. You can tell that, given that it's, it's stayed relatively flat there, that you're continuing to make investments in infrastructure and capital assets that support county functions. The next bar there that's kind of a lighter gray bar is your restricted funds. So these are assets that you have that have a very specific contractual or legal purpose so that you cannot use them for additional services other than what they, their purpose restriction is. And then that last bar there, and you can see that it's trended up over the last five years, is related to, that's what is more at the, the county's discretion to use for funds, so that is what we call unrestricted net position. So overall, good trends there, trending in all categories upward. Another thing, item to point out here that is, is a positive, is that a lot of governments have that unrestricted balance has become negative over the past five to 10 years as a result of needing to record these additional pension or OPEB liabilities within their financial statements. It, it hits that unrestricted category and, and has caused it to go negative. So this is, this includes your pension liabilities, and you're still reporting positive in all categories, which is a good result to have. So now we're going to move on to your general funds. So this is that modified accrual basis, and this is just looking at the general fund and fund balance. So how we get there is we have the revenues and expenses in general fund, and then the result at the end is what you have in fund balance annually, and you can see while your revenue and expenses have trended quite close, you've been able to build a little bit more reserve year over year in your, your general fund balance. to build a little bit more reserve year-over-year in your general fund balance.
Can I just comment on that real quickly?
Yeah.
So, a lot of people pay attention to this with the county, which fund balances we carry that are general fund or unrestricted fund, and then dedicated fund balance, any fund balance reserves and contingencies in both cases. And what I want to just say here is, we're not just hoarding money and patting ourselves on the back because we have a positive fund balance. Over the last 16 years, and it's reflected in our capital assets, we have taken those fund balances on the general fund and dedicated fund side and made huge investments in capital projects as opposed to go out and ask taxpayers to raise new taxes to pay for those. Some examples are, we built a new district attorney's office, which was much needed. We built a new justice court, which was much needed. We remodeled our sheriff's office and moved them, which was much needed. We've, you know, I could go on and on, but you get the point. Over on the restricted fund side, or dedicated fund side, where we carry big balances, so people will say, "Well, the county has $200 million in fund balance." That roughly $100 million over on that side goes towards things like, we're getting ready to expand our airport terminal, so we carry a fund balance there, so we don't have to go ask taxpayers to pass new taxes to pay for these things. If we were hoarding all of that money, this would be closer to probably $500 million over the last 16, 15 years. So we are making those investments. And this fund balance, while it's not spent, there's a portion of this fund balance that is also going to go towards, or potentially go towards, capital projects, like a new jail. So we have some money. We haven't raised all of the money, but most places don't have any of the money to contribute towards those capital projects. We've paid all cash for them, either through dedicated funds, or general funds, or through bonding them by ways that don't burden our taxpayers, like revenue bonds at the airport, where the services we deliver pay for those costs rather than taxpayers paying for those costs. It's worked out quite well for us. We've also taken that, and people focus on this, "Well, you should put this into, let's say, buy mental health service, or help with the homeless issue," which we spend a lot of money on all of those things as well. But those are ongoing operating costs, and this is essentially one-time money. Once you spend it, it's gone. So we don't build programs and services with one-time money, because then when it's gone, we can't sustain those services. So we've invested this money in capital projects, and also in projects that help us reduce our operating costs or generate revenue for us. A great example is we invested money in an RV park. We spent $10 million on that, and that generates about $1 million in revenue every year to the parks fund, and it will continue to do that in perpetuity. So those are examples of why we have these funds. We're not sitting here hoarding them and not using them. We've used them to not have to go out and ask our taxpayers for more funds. And I want to say that because people focus so much on this and these fund balances, and I think it's important they know that. Thanks.
Yeah, of course. So this highlights very similar to what we just saw on the last slide, with what is included within your general fund balance. This is the proportion of it that is sitting in cash and investments. So that trend line follows your fund balance trend line. A statistic that a lot of governments utilize or look at, especially when setting reserve balances, or what they're trying to save in order to make it from June 30th to the time you get your first property taxes, is, there's some guidance about what a good balance might be, would be at least 1/6, or about 17% of your current year expenditures. Clearly, the county's sitting at about 100%. Danny walked through some of the reasons why that is. But obviously, this is a very, very healthy fund balance to support your expenditures. But it's important to always have some level of reserve within your general fund because of that time period between June and October, November timeframe, when you start receiving your property tax funding. So this actually hits on what Danny was mentioning as well, on a lot of those capital projects that have occurred over the past five to 10 years. You can see this is the countywide debt, and over the past four years, you're only seeing declines there, no additional new debt. The one increase in debt four years ago was a result of the emergency communications capital project, which is still being worked on, but...
Yeah, I do want to comment on that. That was not a county-specific project. Essentially, the county served as the fiduciary agent, as the local government agency that is able to pass a countywide bond like that. This supports all of the municipalities, all of the fire districts, all of the ambulance services that provide services across the whole county. So not county-specific purpose of debt, but we were approached by all of those people I just mentioned to do it on behalf of EC SO.
Right. And this just shows a little bit what you're working with in a comparison between the property tax rate in Jackson County versus some of the counties in the north, and just looking at the difference there on what you're working with. This clearly showed within the slide that I had on the revenues, looking at your property taxes, where you're just having very, very incremental increases in property taxes. It speaks to what Danny was talking about, not asking the taxpayers for additional funds. So I think as long as I've worked with you, this has been the property tax rate, and then you can see what the counties in the north are working with. And I actually think one of those counties is at $6. So that was kind of a highlight on the statistical information, or some historical data for the county. I'm just going to end, not with a full accounting lesson, but just to highlight some of the new accounting standards that management had to implement this year, as well as what you might have to look at in the future. So I already talked about GASB 96 and implementing that this year. There is an additional one that's important to be aware of, because I do think that these are becoming more relevant, which are public-public or public-private partnerships. And these types of arrangements do follow very similar to that lease accounting standard in when you might record something within your financial statements. If you have a service concession arrangement, that would be an area that you would look at to see if potentially you need to apply this additional guidance. So while it did not have an impact to the county's financial statements this year, it's just important to be very well aware of this guidance, and that if you enter into any of these types of arrangements, that there could be some specific accounting that you need to follow. The last one is just an omnibus statement, so that is just some technical corrections within a number of statements. It did not have an impact to the county financial statements this year.
I mean, can you give us maybe an example of this public-private and public-private partnership? What would that look like?
Yeah, so this would not ever be, well, I guess not ever, but this wouldn't be applicable here, but I'll give you the example that I tend to give for these. So if, say, when you're building a toll bridge, and you have, so you would have, say, the county as going to be the owner of that toll bridge, but then you're going to have an operator operate that, and if that operator is subject to maintaining the building, or the toll bridge, or whatever the case may be, it clarifies who owns essentially some of those additions and how you report for that. It tackles all the way from the very beginning. So it talks about whether you're going to transfer ownership to one or the other, how that might be recorded versus not transferring. So it's really, when you've entered into, essentially, that could be another government, it could be a private party that you're working with and something like that. So that's one example that I tend to show. I know that we don't have toll bridges here, but that kind of methodology is how that would play out. And then, not effective this year, but over the next couple of years, a few new standards. The only new one up there since I presented to you last year is, just came out right at the end of December, early January, is that last one there, GASB 90 or 102 on certain risk disclosures. So this will be some increased disclosures over certain risk requirements. You already have certain risk disclosures included within your financial statements, but this tackles a few other scenarios. I haven't fully dug into this one, since it just came out, so I don't have a lot of specifics on what that's going to look like. But as typical GASB fashion, you're going to be looking at some potential additional disclosures over areas of risk. And then GASB 100 is just a standard on if you were to identify a correction of an error, how that would report it in the financial statements, or if you make a change to one of your accounting policies, how that might impact your financial statements. One of the things that this statement does that wasn't previously addressed is if you identified an error in any of your required supplementary information, and how that would be addressed within that type of information. And then the last one, GASB 101 on compensated absences. It clarifies some of the types of compensated absences that should report liability within governmental financial statements. So that could have a potential impact to the financial statements, and looking through what qualifies and what does not. So updated some guidance there.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yeah.
Should have asked you this before you came up here. Having our retirement liabilities reflected in our financial statements, is that net of our site accounts? Or is that only, it is, Shannon's shaking her head, yes?
So when you first did, the very first year, when you set up the site account, that first year, it was actually recorded as a deferred outflow, so it's a quasi-asset within the statement of net position. Since then, they take that to essentially reduce your liability. So if you look at your pension liability year-over-year, and then the other thing that, obviously, that you know this, but just to highlight, it impacts your rates. Having that is what will help reduce your rates.
Well, and I think you're talking about our most recent site account, but we actually set up a site account before site accounts were cool. I can think the first one we did was in 2007 or '08. So I was wondering, we didn't have to post the liability to our financial statements back then, but I just want to make sure it's accounting for both of those site accounts, not the most recent one.
Off the top of my head...
Shannon's shaking her head.
She's saying yes, yeah, okay. Because there's, on the, I'm picturing the schedules that you get, and there's an amortization of a site account, so that must be in there. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Not everybody has that, so I can't remember off the top of my head.
I think it's important to mention, too, that along with establishing those site accounts, because we did have the reserves and the ability to take advantage of those, there was also matches involved, so...
Just in the second one, the first one there wasn't.
Right. But regardless, it enabled us to take advantage of that program where a lot of other jurisdictions, municipalities, whatever that you mentioned, don't have these reserves, weren't able to take advantage. And what that does, like you said, is it reduces our rates and our liability over time. Reducing our rates reduces government costs, which enables us to operate more efficiently. So, again, a lot of really, really strong advantages of having those reserves available.
Yeah, yeah. And to some extent, some of the other municipalities that did take advantage of the site account, the newer one, a number of those actually went out and got debt to do that. So while they reduced their pension liability and reduced their rates, then now they have debt associated with setting up that site account, so...
Thank you.
Well, with that, I just want to at least say thank you to everyone. Your team is, like I mentioned, a great internal audit, obviously facilitates the audit and does a great job getting us what we need and facilitating everything. The finance team does a great job at putting together the financial statements and getting us the support that we need in order to really be able to complete the audit on time. There's been a number of extensions with municipalities over the past few years, and I think that the ability to get those is coming to an end. I know the GFOA specifically is cracking down on not providing extensions, so the fact that you have a team that is dedicated to making sure that you're getting your audits done on time is just, it's a really good thing, so...
We appreciate the work you do as well with staff, so thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a lot of comments. I just really appreciate the review of the county financial position and our budget practices. And I think it's important for us to hear it, but for the citizens to hear it. And to Danny's point, the fact that we don't spend our reserves for operating costs, we've seen that in other organizations we belong to and have questioned it, and commissioners look at like, "So what's wrong with that?" It is such a reckless practice that Jackson County does not do, and I've really come to appreciate, and I think it's what keeps our financial position so strong. And I just think we look at the past and we plan for the future, and we, and our budget, the budget team, our departments, our administration plans for even future events to keep our financial forecast in a real strong position, and I really admire that, and I think our county really benefits from that. And I think it's what keeps us in that Triple Crown Award. So thank you, thank you for the great report, and thank you for everybody that contributes to it.
Yeah, I think when you mentioned only eight governments in Oregon received the Triple Crown, that's just for one year. Eight or nine years in a row, I would imagine Jackson County is the only one that has accomplished that. I mean, I don't know if you have that...
I didn't go back to that data. I just, I had, somebody had included that wording within their transmittal letter, so you include all of your awards within your transmittal letter. So maybe a note for next year, you could add the Triple Crown terminology in there. I'll leave a comment for that.
Well, and the amount of work that you list that you need to do to perform this audit, this review, is what staff needs to do every day, needs to pay attention to it. And it just shows, again, it exemplifies the excellent leadership we have top to bottom, you know, especially administration, finance, audit. These departments work extremely hard. These reports don't just happen to be as stellar as they are. It's because of hard work, and I always want to make sure that we acknowledge that. And just, you know, again, touching on what Danny touched on as far as our reserves, the fact that we're able to make these necessary capital improvements out of reserves when they come up, when they're necessary, and not have to ask taxpayers, you know, for bonds to pay for these, and pay additional property tax, is an incredible benefit that I don't think people necessarily realize or appreciate. But the only debt the county has is due to the EC SO, other than the airport.
Yeah, we have some revenue bonds.
Airport, which are, again, usually revenue bonds and FAA grants or our bonds. But, again, the benefit to the taxpayer, and you showed the graphic showing that we do that on a lower tax rate than most counties, and especially the three counties that you compared it to, and that's remarkable. And again, people who may criticize the fact that we have reserves, I promise you, aren't criticizing the fact that we don't have to raise taxes when we need to do necessary capital infrastructure improvements. So, again, I think that needs to be pointed out and appreciated.
I'll just add one comment on to that, because this is probably a generally unknown fact, but the last debt that we took was for our juvenile justice facility, and out of reserves, we were actually able to retire that debt seven years early. And for GO bond debt, we were able to pay that off seven years early and actually relieve a tax burden, not just not create one. So it's been a long time, but I have to just qualify what Commissioner Dyer said, "We're going to need help if we are ever going to build a jail." Like, we can't come up with that much on our own, but...
As of now, we're doing, or in the status that I mentioned, but yeah. It's rare, and again, laudable, so I'll make sure we recognize it. Anything else? Well, thank you again. Always appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you next year. All right, we'll move on into our request for and discussion of non-agenda items. We have a five-minute limit pursuant to the codified ordinances of Jackson County, Section 213.06. Members of the public may address any item not on the agenda. However pursuant to RS 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing a principal subject that is not on the agenda. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners will listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raise by asking staff to follow up on any questions, or by placing the matter on the agenda for discussion at a future meeting. And we do have one person signed up today to speak, and that's Pam McAllister. If you'll please give your name and address before speaking. For the record, we appreciate it. Good morning.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Pam Allister, and I am from Central Point 744, Manzanita Street. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak to you this morning. I'm addressing March 1st, which marks a very special day, and because we have leap year, we have to wait two more days for March 1st. And that day is called Zero Discrimination Day. This is a global holiday created by the United Nations in 2014, and aims to promote equality and attitudes of acceptance for all individuals, regardless of their race, gender, sexual orientation, or other aspects of their identity. It is a day to celebrate diversity and to stand up against discrimination. Many organizations and nonprofits in Jackson Many organizations and nonprofits in Jackson County publicize their policies regarding nondiscrimination, and the Jackson County has accomplished a number of nondiscrimination policies and has every indication of modeling for the community. For example, Jackson County is an equal opportunity employer, and we do not discriminate on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, age, national origin, or disability. And upon request, special accommodations and/or assistance will be gladly provided for any applicant. And with Article 2, I had to dig for this one, a collective bargaining agreement between Jackson County and Jackson County Employees Association. And lastly, in accordance with the requirements of the Americans with Disability Act of 1990 and the ADA Amendments Act of 2008, Jackson County does not discriminate on the basis of disability against qualified individuals with disability services, and there's more to that declaration that I didn't bring today. Zero Discrimination Day raises awareness about harmful effects of discrimination and encourages people to treat others with respect and dignity regardless of their race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, disability. This helps create a more inclusive and harmonious community where everyone is treated equally. Discrimination often leads to social injustices such as unequal opportunities, poverty, violence, and exclusion. Zero Discrimination Day gives the opportunity to prevent different forms of discrimination for us to actively work towards creating an equal and inclusive environment. By recognizing Zero Discrimination Day, we are taking a stand against these issues and promoting a community where everyone has equal rights and opportunities, and to address systematic inequities and to advance gender, racial, and economic justice. In Oregon, unfortunately, there exists a historic legacy of exclusion and discrimination, which has left a residue of social stigma disparities that commentators say persist today for Black people, Indigenous people, and people of color, women, and immigrants and working families. As we know, Jackson County has 18 essential governing departments such as courts, Health and Human Services, Buildings and Grounds, Community Justice. Zero Discrimination Day can alert county leaders and citizens. We can inspire and motivate to give attention and time to review Jackson County policies and procedures so as to uncover and remove any institutional discrimination. County commissioners could express an interest in directing department managers to determine with certainty no barriers to diversity exist and to advance gender, racial, and economic equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I don't have anybody else signed up, but if there's anyone in the auditorium that would like to speak, come on up. Again, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Logan Vaughn. I live about a quarter mile from where I stand. Just wanted to acknowledge the budget, the Triple Crown Award, congratulate you guys for that this year, and thank you. I noticed that we aren't raising our property taxes, and I ask on behalf of the Jackson County citizens that we continue to not do so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the auditorium wishes to speak? Have anybody online with their Zoom hand raised?
Mr. Chair, there is no one with their Zoom hand raised.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on into the consent calendar, which this week consists of the minutes of meetings of the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of February 7th, 2024, and the Board of Commissioners' staff meeting of February 8th, 2024, and an order appointing Albert Laird to complete the term of a resigned member of the Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee. That's Order Number 38-24.
And I will move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Move on now into public hearings. We have one today, which is a public hearing in order in the matter of the transfer of jurisdiction of six county-maintained roads or portions thereof to the city of Medford, and this is Order Number 39-24. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this has been discussed with the board in prior work sessions. As you know, we currently have jurisdiction over a lot of roads that fall within the cities, but in this case, we're talking about six roads specifically or portion thereof within the city limits of Medford. On May 3rd of 2023, your board did authorize an approved order, Number 100-23, with which authorized me to sign an intergovernmental agreement with a jurisdictional exchange agreement between the city of Medford and Jackson County for the jurisdictional transfer of six county-maintained roads or portions thereof to the city of Medford. On January 4th of 2024, and this is pursuant to Oregon by a statute 373-270 sub 6 sub A, the city did initiate a transfer jurisdiction of the six roads or portions thereof. They did that by Medford City Council Resolution Number 2024-05. The six roads or portions thereof are Hillcrest Road from North Phoenix Road to Bel Air Cruz Road, from Table Rock Road to 400 feet north, Kings Highway from Tarazaway to South Stage Road, Airport Road from Table Rock Road to Biddle Road, East Vilas Road from Craterlake Avenue to 2,163.9 feet east, and Oak Grove Road from West Main Street to Stewart Avenue. Pursuant to RS 373-270 sub 4, the board will hold a public hearing on this today to consider if there are any objections or testimony offered by any person interested in this transfer of jurisdiction and determine whether to surrender the jurisdiction is necessary, expedient, or in the best interest of the county. Pursuant to RS 373.270 sub 2B, notice of the public hearing was published in the January 24th, 2024, the January 31st, 2024, the February 7th, 2024, and the February 14th, 2024 editions of the Rogue River Press. It's recommended the public hearing be held and follow that public hearing should the Board of Commissioners find the jurisdictional transfer acceptable. Approval of board order will implement that action, and the effective date of the transfer will be the date of the board order.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
All right, before we open the public hearing, I'll have Mr. Benton read the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here are the rules for the conduct of today's public hearing. Only the chairperson or member of the Board of Commissioners may question a speaker. There'll be no interruptions of a speaker from the audience, no debates on the floor. Applause is not permitted. The speaker may criticize the proposal of the board or agency of the county, but the speaker shall not argue with another speaker directly. Any speaker may present an opposite view, but please not in personal terms. A person wishing to speak shall raise his or her hand, or his or her Zoom hand, or sign in and be recognized by the chairperson conducting the hearing. Only after being recognized, the speaker shall first state his or her name and address before proceeding with his or her statement. The chairperson may limit the duration of any presentation at the time necessary to cover factual information. Repetition by a speaker shall be avoided. Whoever violates any of these such rules shall first be warned by the chairperson, insist from such violation, in the event that such person is not so. Dissist here, she may be ordered by the chairperson to leave the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And with that, we will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up here in the auditorium, but is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this matter? How about on Zoom? Anybody with their Zoom hand raised?
Mr. Chair, there is no one with their Zoom hand raised.
Thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing, and I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve Order Number 39-24.
Second.
Any deliberation?
Nope. Pretty straightforward.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Move on into our discussion and deliberation items. First item there is an order authorizing fiscal year 2024 Airport Infrastructure Grant Agreement Number 3-41-0037-062-2024 with the United States of America, Federal Aviation Administration, and this is Order Number 40-24. Mr. Jordan?
And, Mr. Chair, members of the board, under the bipartisan infrastructure bill, Rogue Valley International, Medford Airport's been approved for reimbursement of allowable costs that were related to an environmental study for the Phase 2 improvements that are part of the East Apron Expansion Project, a lot of which the board's already approved and which we continue to work on. Term of the grant agreements upon execution through four years from the date of execution, it's a revenue of $168,926 for the term of the grant agreement, and I do recommend your approval.
All right. No questions, take a motion.
And I will move approval of Order Number 40-24.
I'll second.
Commissioner Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Moving on, Order, Item Number 2, which is an order authorizing Amendment Number 1 to Jackson County Services Contract dated December 14th, 2023, with cutting-edge job development, doing business Nathan Beard Job Development, and this is Order Number 41-24. Mr. Jordan?
And, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the cutting-edge job development that's doing business is Nathan Beard Job Development, been providing in-person and also remote employment and resource assistance for several years to adults who are on supervision. This assistance includes creating resumes, aiding in job searches. They also maintain a local employment resource database for referrals and provide aid in obtaining or applying for the Oregon Health Plan. Having this resource available does greatly enhance the job development services that are delivered through our Jackson County Community Justice Department. This amendment will extend the term of the contract from March 31st, 2024, to June 30th of 2025. That results in the term being extended beyond the original one year, so therefore requiring authorization from the Board of Commissioners. The amendment is effective upon execution. It's an additional expense to the original contract, which was dated December 14th of 2023, of $52,250. The original contract was a not-to-exceed amount in the amount of $10,450, and this increase will make the new amount totaling $62,700, and I do recommend your approval.
Thank you. Questions, take a motion.
I'll move to approve Order 41-24.
I will second.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Last item on the agenda today is an order authorizing JRP-23-13 Grant Agreement between the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission and Jackson County, and this is Order Number 42-24.
Jordan, moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jackson County Community Justice, through our Community Justice Department, has applied for and now been awarded a grant from the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. This is under the Justice Reinvestment Grant Program. The goal of the program is to financially support localities in fulfilling the requirements of House Bill 3194. This was meant to reduce prison utilization, avert future prison construction, reduce recidivism through evidence-based practices, and increase accountability of those adults on supervision. Funding for these programs has been provided by the Criminal Justice Commission for many years. The term of the agreement is July 1st of 2023 through March 31st of 2026. It does require ratification to become effective July 1st of 2023. It's a revenue for the term of the contract of $4,515,064, and I do recommend your approval.
Thank you. No questions, take a motion.
I move approval of Order Number 42-24.
I'll second.
Commissioner Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. And that does conclude our business, so we are adjourned.
We hope that you have enjoyed this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have any questions on any part of the show, please feel free to contact your Jackson County Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information at jacksoncountyor.gov. To review the content of this or any other recent meeting, under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming.